We're on the air, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening all. Welcome to the virtual meeting of the Growth Planning Committee for the evening of February 16. I'm Dan Saunders. Introduce other members. Janet?
You have your Janet.
Hi Jim.
Oh, hi. Hi Paul. Jim Fitzgerald.
Paul Hogan.
James McMahon.
Tom Morgan.
All right. See, Mike and Janet are on, so welcome as well. Do they have any guests? Dave? I don't see anyone listed as a guest. Well, welcome all to...
He's an out as an attendee.
Okay, well, welcome. Thank you for joining. So our first, we just completed our first item on the agenda, which is introductory member and guests. Second up is a review of the recreational and cultural resources. Craft. So, chapter 14. So, Tom, I'll let you take it away.
Okay. Some of you came in a minute ago. You probably didn't hear me say Liz will not be joining tonight, she's not feeling well. She's the principal author of this chapter. So I expect I'll get this right, but it's kind of a last minute notice I got presenting tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna share the screen, get a slideshow up there if I can.
You should be able to, I've allowed it.
Excellent. Okay. So you all recognize this facility, it hasn't been around that long.
No.
Now, we're talking about recreational cultural resources this evening. Now, good, all right.
So you didn't capture that picture last week, I guess?
No, no, that was... That was in the summertime. It might have been 2019. But it was, you know, it was a great, a great scene, you know? Having a good time up there.
Yep.
And that's exactly what that facility was built for.
Exactly.
So, tonight we'll be taking an inventory, kind of an exhaustive inventory. I was impressed with just how comprehensive Liz was in gathering. I was surprised with the town, it's less than 4,000 people year round. Kenny Bunkport has so much going for it in terms of recreational opportunities.
We have sound.
We'll be talking about town parks, conservation land and open space. It's another area where Kenny Bunkport excels. Doing large measure to the efforts of the Conservation Trust. Then there'll be a separate inventory of cultural resources, listing of festivals and events. Program is signed by the Recreation Department. And then some of the improvements they have in the pipeline looking forward. Other recreational opportunities and planning. Now, recreational resources are broken down into two categories. I'd like anybody to jump in if you think that we've left anything off the list. And you can see the passive recreation opportunity is quite extensive. And the active ones are a full program as well.
Is the golf, is the golf, Frisbee Golf as opposed to golf? We have a golf?
Is it Frisbee Goffs?
They're already consolidated.
Yeah, I assume that's referring to both, but...
But is there, my question is, do we have real golf in town?
You have a golf course, no?
Yeah, a golf course.
Is that in town? Oh yeah, I guess it is. I think it's at Arondo.
Yeah, close, close.
Yeah.
Basketball as well, they have...
Oh yeah, okay.
Opportunities for basketball. We've got the tennis, hockey, golf, baseball, football.
How come wrestling's out on there?
Wrestling, there you go.
We do wrestling in town?
I'm the youth coach, so I gotta represent, I gotta...
Yeah.
Well, add wrestling. Any other areas or omissions?
I thought they were doing paddle ball, too.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Are they doing it now, or are they planning to do it?
Well, they, they had been for quite a while. They were playing at Consolidated over at Waterhouse, and I think over on Beechwood.
On the tennis courts? They were just using a tennis court at Beechwood?
Yes.
Okay. And where was that first place, Janet?
Consolidated, it's cool.
Consolidated.
Okay. All right, in a moment, we'll talk about the Rec Department's plans for another facility that's more dedicated to pickleball. Anything else that we missed on this list? Anything that's on the list that doesn't belong here?
What's climbing?
We're climbing, climbing, climbing. I assume it means rock climbing. Are you doing rock climbing in town?
I don't know.
Not sure.
And we'll revisit that one and check.
Probably not. It might have something, yeah, it might be something at Consolidated School.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have a climbing website?
Oh yeah.
It might be, I don't recall. It's been a while since I was in there.
All right. We'll, we'll get to the bottom of that one. Anything else we should take another look at here? All right.
Does biking on trails, is that bicycling, or is that something different? It's a big activity. You know, the off-road?
Yeah. I assumed that we were referring to both, Paul.
Okay.
I, I know that there is opportunity in Conservation Trust properties in some locations for, for off-road biking. Ready for the next slide? I like the... So, here's quite, quite an ambitious matrix. This is, this is the type of thing that has plenty of room for errors, too. So I'm gonna test you all, see if you've done your homework, if you've read the report. As if we have any dots in the wrong place, or if, you know, some of those blanks really should have dots in. But you can...
Goose, Goose Rocks on ownership should probably say public and private.
Well, I saw that, too, and I'm saying, that's exactly... Because I know if, if I picked up on that, you guys would, too. Any other, any other things that are out of place here? Did we miss anybody? This is only...
What's the, oh, I didn't realize. Is there a difference between the Breakwater Beach and the Colony Beach?
You tell me. I've, I've seen repeated references to both of them as separate.
Adjacent, but separate.
Yeah.
So on both sides of the river, there's beach? I mean, not both sides of the river.
If we go back to one of the previous chapters, it was, it was next to the colony, but I'll be honest with you, I wasn't able to visualize or recall hearing of it. So I'm not familiar with it, but in the report, it did say they were adjacent.
Notice that Liz made one distinction between the two, and she says one is public and the other is private.
Okay.
Well...
That could be the difference.
Does the Breakwater Hotel have a sandy area?
I don't know if it's related to the Breakwater Hotel. Would it be related more to those, are those cabanas that are, that's Kenny Bunk, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we test, we test water at two beaches in town, Goose Rocks Beach and Colony Beach. We do not test, and I've never heard of, so we should check that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Check Breakwater Beach.
Breakwater Beach, a real thing.
And the, and the Colony Beach is public.
Yeah, I wonder if, you know, technically on some D, Colony has some portion of that as a private, that they just don't really enforce, and Breakwater Beach is a public?
It's half and half. Colony Beach is half and half, half public, half private.
Ah.
That Silas Perkins is really on the river and not really a ocean beach.
That's right next to Arondo Wharf, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it listed as a park here.
Yeah, that's what that is, that's a park.
So is it otherwise, is it, is it accurate how it reads there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I didn't see the headings.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot to see here. There's, um... Do you see anything that looks out of place? Any omissions here? Because we got another one and a half more slides of this stuff here. Ready to look at the second part? Here we go.
Mm-hmm.
Oops. Thought I did.
Where's the, I don't know, go ahead, it's the next one.
All right, let me, I'll take, let me make a comment. You've got a nice rink at 25 School Street, which is a direct center.
Yeah.
But you don't have ice skating as a sport.
Ah.
Uh-huh, all right.
Well, you're gonna get your bonus this year, Jim.
Yeah, good job.
How much?
The usual.
A free skate.
It's priceless.
Okay. I imagine they do free form skating there as well as hockey?
Well, you can do all kinds of different hockey.
All right, you guys ready for the, for the next slide?
Sure.
You can come back here if you think of something. Hey, here's, uh, here's the map that shows you where a lot of these things are located. It's, you know, the first time I looked at this map, I said, wow, for, for a town this size, there's a lot going on in terms of recreation. Do you see anything that doesn't look right, or anything we might have missed on this map?
What are the, what are the color codes designated? I don't see...
They're up in the upper right. Rachel Clarkson's the brown. It kind of, great green is owned by the town, and the more forest green is the Conservation Trust property. And the big blue circles are recreational facilities.
So, when you refer to waterfront access points, I assume you mean public as opposed to every property that might have access, which is a private residence or otherwise, right?
Yes, I did, exactly. And I know we've been on this ground before.
Yeah, so the, the one on the farthest northeast should come off, that, the pink waterfront access, that's the private, there's, there is a private right away for the people who have houses.
Were you up here by...
No, beyond that. There's one more.
Okay.
Right next to the R, yeah.
Got it, all right.
I think you had it labeled on, you know, as, what's that neighborhood called? Anyway, that doesn't, it's not there. That's just a private launch.
Yeah. I think, I'm pretty sure Liz pulled a lot of this off the state's Jazz database. And of course...
Right.
Expect there'd be a few mistakes when things get translated up to the state level.
Yeah.
The other thing to keep in mind is, is, you know, when we get to checking the plan and the document to make sure it meets the state criteria, state has a certain agenda, and one of them is, you know, show us all your places where the public has, has, you know, access to the water. Show us where the public can launch a boat, that sort of thing. So, that's why this keeps coming back. Because we keep hitting this checklist from the state to make sure we don't miss anything.
Yeah, they're, sorry. The other thing that, I don't know if that makes sense, I know, or where it would be overlaid is where certain activities can occur. And I'm gonna bring up hunting. You know, like, you can go down the street and go hunting, because there's enough room. I'm not sure if that's worthwhile to somehow indicate what, you know, what you can do where.
It's in there someplace.
Yeah.
It is in the, the chapter, we just haven't got to that far.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
It doesn't show on the map, because, I mean, there's just so many places you can hunt, it would be really tough to put it on a map.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only other, I would say, inconsistency at Goose Rocks is you're showing four other waterfront access points, one, two, three, four, plus the one at the far west end. But on the, the map you got from the town, there were...
More than that, yeah.
Yeah, many more than that. There's, you know, there, all the public streets, you know, in the, in one area have it, as well as some other ones. And that one also omits the one, I'll get to it. The one at the far west end is not shown on that map.
Yeah, good point, Paul. What we're looking at here, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm sure Liz must have just pulled this off a state database.
Yeah.
This is what the state of Maine believes is the state of affairs here. Any other comments on the map? Okay. Then we have aerial, couple of your principal town-owned recreation areas, you recognize them both, I'm sure. Liz told me she's gonna aim for better graphics in the, in the final version. But for now, you can, you can see Parsons Field. The photo on the left was taken from Google and Google Earth. It was, you can see it was before the rec building was built. It looked like the construction was underway. And then on the right, of course, is Roadwood Park at Beechwood.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah.
There were several pages, like three pages of the, of those, that grid. I think we just looked at the first one.
Yeah, I, I noticed that.
But I recall it said the, that Kenny Bunkport Disc Golf was on private land on one of the, on that second page of the matrix, I think, second or third.
I think it was the very bottom of the first, well, I'm looking at the plan. Page four of the chapter, it was the very bottom.
It's private. What's this, what's the real status? Is it public or private?
I assume if Parsons Field is public, it's also on the public land, which is above the school and the sewer plant. That's all public land.
Right, now you can see on the aerial, Liz has it down here, in the bottom.
Yeah, that's where it is. But it's, that's public land.
All right.
Yeah.
Any, any comments or observations on these two photos? Okay. And here's what Paul was referring to a moment ago.
Oh, right.
Yeah, this, this shows you that there are more than four pink dots along Goose Rocks, and shows you locations and the names. So, Paul, you're a resident of that neighborhood. Do these names look like they're, they're...
Yeah, it looks pretty, it looks pretty reliable. If it's on the town, this looks like it was taken off of the beach use agreement.
Yep.
And if, if that's where it came from, it's accurate.
Well, you can rely on the town, or you can rely on the state.
Well, that's, yeah, the beach use agreement came in much more recently. They probably don't even, no, it's there.
Yeah. But, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, I would surmise that these access points have been used for like a long time, no?
Oh, oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That sounds about right. Plus the one that's not shown at the west end, because it doesn't fit on this map. There's, you know, there's one way at the other end.
All right, well, that sounds like it's a good footnote in the plan. Do you know the, does it have a name associated with it?
Um, I'm sure it does.
All right, we'll chase it one now.
It's right on King's Highway.
Okay.
To the very end of King's Highway on the west end.
Okay. All right, there was a pink dot on that site, yeah. Okay.
I'll see if I can find it while we're talking.
All right. And then again, here's, here's some of the, the 2,300 acres that are protected in town. It's, it's quite impressive. I know they've been at it for quite a while, too. 71% is the conserve land, is owned by the Conservation Trust. The rest is by the town. I think the island camping is pretty cool. They let, like us people from New Hampshire go on those islands to camp?
Yeah. Anyone can make a reservation. And it's free.
I'll, I'll get out there sometime. And then, then Liz made mention of Meadow Woods Preserve with Dog Park, that's one of the more recent acquisitions. And if you read the text in the chapter, trail maintenance is an ongoing effort and it's a never-ending task, but fortunately, there are a lot of volunteers who pitch in. And the Conservation Trust hasn't ceased acquiring land. They, they have their eye out for what, what may be coming next. Now we're shifting over to another facet of the chapter, and that's cultural resources. And again, Kenny Bunkport has, has quite a, quite an impressive array here. You can see the ones, cultural facilities on the left and meeting spaces on the right.
Tom?
Yes.
There is a, under halls and meeting rooms, the Perkins House is no longer there. It was razed at the time of the, the addition made to the library.
But you did gain, you did gain a meeting room at the Mother's Wing.
Yes, we did.
A beautiful meeting room.
Yeah.
It is. And before you say it, I, I know when we get to that part of the library, the, the, the capacity was incorrect on the chapter, but we'll fix that, too.
Do we want to, I know you make reference elsewhere on nearby cultural facilities. I'm just wondering about the center at Lower Village, is a senior place? It seems like, you know, by putting it here, it seems like it's in town, which it isn't. So...
Right.
Do you wanna...
I think you, you, you did a nice cross-reference when it gave other things in, in the area. It was listed there.
So we could do two things. We could identify it as being located across the bridge, or we could take it off the list.
Or we could merge the towns.
Yeah. Well, that is kind of tricky, because, you know, we've crossed the bridge into the Lower Village, but where do you stop, you know?
We just want the power grid.
Shall we alter this list somehow, or here, leave it alone, or what do you want to do?
I guess my inclination is to take it off the list, particularly because there are, there's always a fight over funding it, and it always is nominal, and people don't want to fund it. So, it's kind of, I would feel it was a slap in the face to me if I was running that place.
Yeah, we should take, take those off there, and Kenny Bunk.
Reclaim it in the crop land, but then we don't pay?
Yeah, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. So the center of Lower Village and River Tree Arts, right?
Yeah, River Tree Arts was the other one of, you know, you mentioned them, and you don't describe them here, so I don't think there's any loss.
Yeah. The, I don't know if you noticed, there was a, a web link in the, in the chapter, too. That one went to the wrong place. It was just a test to see if you guys were checking the links.
No, wasn't checking the links.
I checked.
Failed that test. You did? Good.
Yeah.
Any other changes you want to make to this, this, this list here? Anything missing?
Under, under the First Congregational Church, there is that community hall, that hall that is across from the post office. So I'm just wondering if that's sort of absorbed into the church, or if it's, you know, it's at the First Congregational Church and meeting hall. I don't know if you need to add that, or just...
It is a separate facility.
It is a totally separate building.
Right. Now, on the, on the right of the meeting rooms...
Oh, yeah, I missed it. There it is. Thank you.
Oh, it's over there?
It's over on the right.
Are they the same?
Yeah, it's there, there.
They the same church?
Yeah, Community House.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Any other omissions, additions, mistakes? All right, let's see what's coming up next here. Festivals and events. That's quite a list there, too, for a small town.
One every weekend. Or so it seems.
Tell me about the Seashore Trolley speakeasy.
I've never been to it. Is it, does that refer to special events that they have there? It's sort of an annual fundraiser? It's like a roaring twenties party?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
It's a, it's an event at the trolley, but it's not ongoing.
Okay, well, that's all right. We're, we're...
All right.
Festivals and events. About the, the Polar Plunge over in Kenny Bunk, were you gonna, gonna leave these Kenny Bunk events, or take them off the list?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would take the last three off.
All right.
Sorry for paying you by the word, Tom.
Yeah, that's all right. The, any other, any, anything we missed here?
I know that there are a number of craft fairs, but I, I wouldn't be able to tell you if they are absolutely every year. They seem to be very frequent, and unfortunately, I can't really tell you who even sponsors them. If it's an organization, or it's not, it's not the River Tree. I mean, it's not... If it's an organization, or it's not, it's not the River Tree. I mean, it's not Women in the Arts. I don't really know. I can look into it.
It's the one, are you talking about the ones on the green that the trust?
They have them on the green, and they've also had them down and around between the Community Hall on Temple Street and the church. They've done it there. But the green is definitely the one that is more prominent. I don't know with COVID, and it just seems like, you know, we haven't seen a craft fair for a while, but...
Yeah, we've been hiding out for a year now.
Yeah, we have.
I suspect a lot of this information came from the Chamber of Commerce, so we'll look back.
And you know, the Kennybunk Festival Art Dining Dinners, that was the original Kennybunkport Festival.
The Wine and Food Festival?
Yeah. So that is gone. It's really just the Kennybunkport Festival now.
Yeah.
So the, all right, Liz, what was the reason for its demise?
It was...
It evolved.
Yeah.
It was what?
I think it just evolved.
Yeah, it was just evolving. It was very small back then. And it got a little bit bigger, and then it got real big. Now it's back to small again.
Okay. Anything else we want to change on this list? Looks good, then. Programming. Looks like the REC department is kind of an expansive agenda, which also impressed me. And they've not doing a bad job adapting to the current pandemic. And Shade Tree Tour, I didn't know about that before. Have you guys all taken advantage of that?
You know, I'm not quite sure what that means, and my husband's on the Shade Tree Commission, but I know that there hasn't been a dedicated tour in the past few years, but I know what's working in the works is, what they're calling is the town, the town is arboretum. And they're doing, they're identifying all the trees, and they're working on doing QR, quick readers on trees, so that it becomes sort of a, the whole town is an arboretum. That's the concept.
Yeah, I did hear about that, Janet. In fact, as I recall, they've inherited 1,300 trees.
Yes.
Put them in a database, geographical database.
Right.
Maybe this means self-guided shade tree tour, which is what the QR thing would be, essentially.
Yeah.
I would be happy to get the specific on that and see how it might be represented accurately with just a few words.
Yeah, if you could.
I'd be happy. Yeah, sure.
Do you notice it like a pamphlet or something? I've seen that in some places, you know?
Yeah. I'll find out.
A self-guided tour.
I know the tree word.
Okay, good. Inside knowledge. Management. Two full-time and three part-time staff, tons of volunteers, and very extensive website. I think it's going to be hard to find anything missing in this, this chapter, I mean, in this department. Budget.
I think in the Cape Porpoise line, I think that means Cape Porpoise Library. It receives independent funding.
That looks about right.
As opposed to Atlantic Hall or...
Right. It's the library itself.
We'll clarify that Cape Porpoise is...
I think the number for the library is higher than that, too. I think it's 165 or 162, but I don't want to split hairs.
We're up at fiscal year 2019, so you may be talking about current budget.
Well, yeah, I think it's 160-something, and they haven't changed it in three years, they said, but I don't know if that's that important.
We'll check that budget figure.
Yeah.
Any other comments or suggestions on this table?
Is there any reason why the REC budget would go down by 20%? It seems like they're doing more and more. I'm just wondering.
Right. Well, we can look into that, too. My guess is they were, you know, the new building sucked up a lot of money, and now it's...
Oh, okay. Okay.
Why is, but I'll pose that question to Liz. And then they're looking toward the future here. Ice rink was recently completed. How old is the ice rink?
Two years, second season, maybe.
All right. Is it a big hit?
I do not know.
Can you ever get it frozen?
Yeah, it doesn't have refrigeration, so it's dependent upon Mother Nature, which is always a challenge.
Yeah, last year was a complete bust. This year is pretty good, but you're missing some personnel.
Which personnel are missing there? Then evidently Pickle Paul is going to get a dedicated facility. They'll be moving it out of the school. One of the tennis courts needs an upgrade. And the REC department has some more facilities planned for Parsons Field. Any other questions, comments, suggestions on this one?
That looks good.
Nope.
Okay. Other recreational opportunities. So you guys got a really good variety of things to do in your leisure time.
Tending growth planning meetings.
Yeah.
And then we're looking at the answers from the 2018 survey you guys organized for the comp plan. And these questions and answers pertain to recreational and cultural resources. Level of service. This is kind of an analysis that planners like to do. Liz was calculating how much acreage you have devoted to recreation compared to, you know, as a ratio, you know, per 1,000 residents. And that's how you compare yourself with other geographical locations. So interestingly enough, 4.4 is kind of on the low side, but, you know, it's quality that comes. You guys have, you know, really a great variety in terms of...
I thought the metric was awful that you picked. It doesn't reflect, you know, miles and miles and hundreds of acres of land that is unique and well-suited to the people who live here, you know, widely used, and yet this crazy planning organization, because they can't build on it, they consider it not countable. So I think they're looking at recreation and open space very differently than we view it. We think we have, you know, we think the trust and the town both have, you know, done a good job over many, many years to keep this town from turning into something else. And by, you know, by developing land as trust properties, leaving it as woods, managing it as woodlands, and it's just not captured by this association. I hope you don't belong to it, Tom.
American Planning Association, their headquarters in Chicago. They ask me for money every...
I would give it to the Kennybunkport Conservation Trust instead, and welcome you in town anytime. Anyway, this, so I just think this makes us look really bad.
Yeah.
And not only, it just is a big misrepresentation of the quality and the appreciation of our natural resources here. Yes, we can't build basketball courts on it all, but...
Okay. No, excellent comments, Paul. I appreciate it. We will do serious revisiting of this section of the chapter.
And I don't make the comment just because it makes us look bad on the per acre, you know, acres per thousand residents, but because it's not an accurate representation of the complete, of what people like to do here, et cetera.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, how do they take into account?
It's on page...
Available line for hiking and so forth that is offered, which...
Ignore it. Like I said, they're based in Chicago. People in Chicago don't know about that stuff, you know?
It's on page 20 of the report, and it basically says, "They exclude, however, there are no nationally accepted standards for determining ideal levels of service or parkland or criteria for what resources should be included as parkland. They only consider developable, publicly accessible parkland within their jurisdiction that meets its needs for parks, playgrounds, athletic fields, open play space, and recreation centers. Resources such as beaches, golf courses, or conservation land are excluded."
Oh, we will apply a different metric, even if we have to make up our own, because, you know, we've discussed the last 20 minutes. Cape Porpois offers, you know, wide range recreational opportunities. Plus, I think the town's done a really good job of meeting the needs of every demographic, you know? It'd be hard pressed to find a place where the town has fallen short.
We're not New York City, nor do we want to be.
Okay, not New York. We'll pass that on to Elizabeth.
And she asked that question. She asked that question in the thing. She says, "Does the growth plan wish to evaluate level of service using a different metric?"
Yes, and that's the last thing she said to me before she said she wasn't showing up tonight. She said, "That's the question I wanted to ask." I said, "I'll pass it along, Liz."
The answer is yes.
Okay. We will completely redo this part. And then the future, you know, the, as much as the town's doing a great job at present, the world's not standing still. Everybody's grown older. And what we did notice earlier on in the comp plan is the median age keeps creeping up in Kennybunkport. So there's more and more, a larger percentage of the town's population is older than they were. So that's going to change their interest. It's going to change the, you know, the type of services that will be in demand. So that's something that you all should be thinking about. I'm sure the Recreation Department is as well.
Hey, can I, I forgot to make a comment back when we were on the beach. The text said owners have preferential use. It's not on the slides. It's in the text.
Okay. What page is that? Yeah, that's my interest, too. Is it accurate?
No, it's not accurate.
Okay.
So it implies, so some beachfront owners do have exactly what was described there, preferential use of a reserve areas, of a reserve area. That's 65 out of, or 68 out of 109, which you don't need to say, of course. But everybody who lost the lawsuit does not have that. And there are already issues with people who bought houses from those people thinking they have it, and trying to not let people be in their quote-unquote "reserve area," which they don't have.
All right. It looks like we're talking about page 10, huh?
Let me go back to it. Thanks.
I got page nine.
Page nine.
Near the bottom, "Beachfront property owners are entitled to preferred use of reserved portion of the beach adjacent to their upland property."
So you could say some beachfront property owners, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, there's no easy way to describe it, because it's a matrix.
Right. Would adding "some" solve the problem?
Yeah. Yeah. I would say some property owners are entitled to preferential use it. Those owners, I would put in the next sentence, "May exclude members of the general public from the reserve area. However, the public has a right to walk across the reserve area at any time." There is a caveat to that about high tide, but I won't further complicate.
Well, why don't we, why don't we see if we can fix the language, and we'll shoot you off an email and make sure we got it right?
I think those two words would be fine. It would be a much better representation of the law and the facts.
Okay.
Just get rid of "property" in that second sentence, but "those owners."
Those, okay.
I helped to draft it, so...
Good. Well, that's why I'm relying on you to make sure we get it right. Any other comments on the beach? Fly back to where we were before.
Sorry. I shouldn't have.
That's right. Climate change. It's going to get hotter. That means Shade Tree, anybody who's on the Shade Tree Committee, their job's going to be...
Keep planting.
And REC department's talking about splash pools and ways to keep people cool. Sea level rise is going to take away some of that reserved beach area. And then, of course, with the increase in storm events and the severity of storm events, that's going to make storm water more challenging. So we'll be paying attention to that by using impervious favors and low impact. Any other climate change impacts that you'd like to add to this list?
No, that looks good.
Now, here's the state of Maine. You know, when they review the comp plan to make sure it's consistent with the Growth Management Act, they want us to do certain analysis, as you know. You see there, one of their primary emphasis is ensuring that the public has access to the water. That's their, you know, stated pretty clearly in this call. And these are the questions they want us to ask about our plan. We can go through all these questions. I think the town's doing a really good job with recreational facilities and services, so I think we're going to score high on this one. Do you see anything in the first three questions where the town would not make the grade?
There's always, I think it was mentioned in the last go-around, there's always a problem, because there's limited public facilities at the beach to go to the bathroom, although the new owner of the Tides, well, 10 years now, has put up signs indicating anybody's welcome to use their facilities. That was before COVID. So that was a nice...
Okay. What about other places along the shore where rest facilities would really come in handy?
I know Cape Porpois has an issue. There's nothing really... I know Cape Porpoise has an issue. There's nothing really, is there anything out of the point?
You know, the Cape Porpoise Pier would be an obvious place for.
Yeah. I mean, there are two restaurants, but I don't think they have clearly posted invitations to, you know, access the facilities.
That's a good question. I'm not sure of that.
I mean, they are rebuilding the pier. Maybe that's something to.
Exactly, that'd be the time.
I don't think there's any public facilities out there at all.
No.
No.
Well, we'll mention that.
There's one in the side of the, obviously, the restaurant, the ramp. They have their, you know, private restaurants if you're eating there.
Yeah, they have, they have one restroom in the ramp.
And what about, what's the name of the fish shack next door?
They have.
The Chatterhouse?
I believe they have a, I think they believe, I believe they have something.
And that, that does face outside, right? You don't have to, if you know it's there.
The door is on the outside of the building to access the bathroom? I don't know.
I think, I think it's all on the inside, to be truthful.
All right, looks like it's gonna require a field trip then. We'll check it out.
Yeah, there you go.
Wait for the cold beer.
It's only gonna be, you know, theoretical. We're not gonna have to really have to go, you know? All right, any other questions, comments on the first three state questions? We've got some more states.
They still have water bodies behind the store near the beach? I know that's probably.
Yes. Yeah, they have had, there are two in that area very close to each other. One at the pump station and one at, behind the store. But, but there's nothing where most people go.
Is Goose Rock?
Yeah, we're back to Goose Rock, Jim was asking about. You know, it's a, it's a long walk from a lot of the area to, and you don't want to get in your car because you'll lose your parking spot. And if you walk, the kid will pee along the way, so guess what happens?
Kid will do it anyways.
But, Paul, you gotta pick your battles. When they gotta go, they gotta go.
Okay, moving on to questions four, five, six, and seven. Number four is pretty easy. Isn't that an exemplary mechanism there? The Land Trice has been at it for quite a while and done a great job.
Five is probably the biggest, I mean, foreboding. Five has always been a problem. There isn't really an easy place to take your putt-putt and go fishing for the day.
Number six, are your trails adequately maintained? I would say yes.
For sure.
Yeah.
Traditional access to private land's being restricted. That gets back to the hunting question. Any problems there?
Not that I'm aware of.
What does that mean? People posting their signs? People posting their properties?
Yeah, yeah.
Or they used to be available, now they posted them.
I haven't heard that come up and I haven't seen it around where I'm at.
Yeah, the way I read it is, is it happening to the degree that it's hard to find a place to hunt? What I'm hearing is no, there's not much of a problem.
I mean, I'm sure as land gets developed, it's eliminating, you know, subdivisions eliminate wooded areas, for sure.
Yeah. And questions in the present tense, so do we have a problem at present?
No.
Certainly not, you know.
It's a question we got asked. I'm not a hunter, so I haven't been impacted directly, but I haven't seen it around where I'm at.
I mean, the protocol is you're supposed to ask permission to go and get rid of permission. Otherwise, you know, I mean, I guess that's, that's, that's not the rule, but it's the common practice. You always ask permission to go and hunt on somebody's property. As far as development, still go hunting, but it's a matter of using a rifle or shotgun, you know, it's got, it's all situational awareness, really. I hunt, so it's a costly battle between, you know, the taboo of firearms and, you know, people, my dog is scared of fireworks. You always see the editorials come around in November where people, you know, are against hunting, whatever, but, you know, so. And out of staters that don't understand that, that may move up. So they, it all depends on the post they brought me, why.
Well, I think you passed the seven questions. Now, I was talking to a fellow in the state government who was in charge of, just a couple of weeks ago, I had a conversation with him. His job is to check comprehensive plans to see if they meet the state criteria. You know, if they, if they address all these types of questions at the end of every chapter. I mostly want to know is, you know, are you guys gonna be, you know, judges on the extent to which the plan addresses climate change? And then they haven't quite caught up with that yet. There's some legislation in the pipeline right now that would, would add a lot of climate criteria to the list of questions. But in the course of talking to him, I was surprised he mentioned, kind of offhand, that the town of Kenny Bunk comprehensive plan failed. They did not get certified. I don't know if you guys were aware of that.
No. Did he say why?
He talked to the regional planners to try to figure out what was going on. And evidently, whoever's preparing the plan wasn't reading the questions. They apparently weren't even aware.
Uh oh.
They did enough of a lot of work. If you can go on, online and see it on their website, they have assembled quite a bit of material, but they simply forgot this part at the end, you know, answering the questions.
Oh, God.
It's quite important, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so they got a failing grade. I'm not sure where that leaves them. But that's not gonna happen here.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we didn't hire those guys.
Yeah, we didn't hire those guys.
Really? We got the right people.
Anyways, the, that's, that's what I have for recreational and cultural resources this evening. We have a couple other items on the agenda, but are there any other questions, comments you have on the chapter?
So like, so it's a good question you brought up, answering these questions. And number five is one we obviously struggle with.
Yes.
So I would suspect that they would want to see that we have some type of strategy on how we plan to address that. Right? Or would like to.
The way the question reads is, do we, do you have public access?
That's what you mean by public access. Can you get to the beaches? Yes.
You launch a boat or whatever.
Can you launch a boat? That's different.
Yeah, the launch of the boat is the hard part.
Yeah. Then you ask the key question is, you know, the question that follows is, what are you gonna do about it?
Right.
But if we answer the question, yeah, access is okay, then the next question doesn't, doesn't matter, you know? I know, I know the committee spent, you know, quite a few minutes talking about this issue. Was it the last meeting or the one before?
Yeah. That's just something we ought to think about when we're addressing our strategies.
Right, I mean, we do not have a public launch site.
Right.
Can you launch a boat if you have a 16-foot, you know, Boston Wheroe or 20-foot Boston Wheroe and you want to go out fishing for a day? Can you launch it along Ocean Avenue at the private places? You know, can you pay for a day launch?
Yes.
I imagine.
What are you eating?
He's waiting for dinner. He just had a cracker.
I'm starving to death. I haven't gone all day. Yes, it would have cost like 65 bucks or something.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Wow.
Did somebody mention the Turras Cove is, you can launch, but there's just no parking? Is that, is that a right way to launch?
It is.
Yeah, it's ambiguous. They make it difficult for you to do because there's no place to put your car. But if, you know, if you can get the boat off the trailer and drag it across the beach, it's not illegal, right?
No, it's perfect, it's perfectly allowed if you have the right size boat at the right tide, at the right everything.
If you have help and you can get it into a.
You have to have a helper too to drive a car.
A help, yeah. You need, you need other people or another person.
There is a kind of a quasi boat launch down, down at that far end of Goose Rock where it's kind of private.
Yeah, it's owned by the, by the GRBA, right? And you can pay for a day launch or a seasonal launch. And it's not that, maybe it's 25 bucks in, 25 bucks out, you know, which I guess that would be $50 a day. Most people don't do that. They just.
They just do it.
They launch, no, they, no, it's locked. You have to get the key from somebody
Oh, okay.
and pay. But most people who do it, you know, put the boat in for two weeks or the season. And so it doesn't seem bad at all. Or you can join the association and then it's free.
Yeah, benefits a membership.
There you go.
I'd be curious if there is a need to have that, like a Savagow Lake or whatever, where you have those areas where there's the day people, you know, with all the private ops. Is there really that need? I don't know if that's worthy of a survey question.
I mean, there is, I mean, you know, nearby, you can go to Bitterford and launch at a public, I don't know what they charge, but it's a public place right off of.
It's free.
It's free.
And free parking.
And free parking, and it's not far.
And it's not far and you, you're right there at the headwaters of the, of the Bitterford or the.
Of the Saco, yeah.
I was just looking back at our 2012 plan and we did have a strategy there to identify areas that would be suitable and considered obtaining either by purchasing or by other means property to construct a municipal boat launching ramp.
Okay, so that would be.
Yeah.
And, and the one at, the one at Cape Porpoise is on private land, by the way. And they give the town, the owner of the property, I guess it's two property owners who own that. They've given, you know, rights to the town, so there's, is public access there based upon certain rules.
And public access doesn't necessarily mean no fee, correct?
Of course, right.
So you can take credit for the private marinas then?
There are private marinas. There is the place that they.
Yeah, you can work out, you can work out something with the private marinas.
Yeah, it doesn't say free public access. It just says access.
Right.
It's anything but free.
Right.
We will revisit that, of course. Gotta get that one right so we get a good score on question five.
That's good.
Now, any other comments, questions about the chapter?
Looks good.
Looks good.
My next slide is about the next agenda item. You guys ready to move on to number three?
Sure.
Sure.
We did, at the last meeting, you saw we did, whoops, we did mini survey number one, in which we shot out six questions. We got 143 responses. I thought it was pretty interesting. And when we, a month or so ago, when we talked about using Survey Monkey to try to get a sense of, you know, where the townspeople are on various issues, we planned on sending out these surveys at least every other month, maybe more frequently. And I kind of like the idea in terms of a strategy to engage the public in the middle of pandemic. You know, it's a conventional thing to do, but we, we have a few obstacles that we have to kind of figure out, you know, okay, this isn't gonna work, so what can we do? And in my mind, the advantage of throwing out multiple surveys over a period of weeks and months is you keep the townspeople engaged over, you know, continuously engaged as opposed to, what usually happens with comp plans is the, the people putting the plan together will do one survey and call it a day, you know? This is a different approach, but I, I think it shows a lot of promise. So our task for tonight is to talk about the content for mini survey number two. And this one, we're proposing four questions, see how you, see if you like them. And of course, we're open to questions that you think, you know, might be appropriate as well.
I think, Tom, it wouldn't be a bad idea as question number one to ask, did you take mini survey one? Yes, no, don't know? And, you know, so we get a sense of whether we're talking to the same 100 people or whether, you know, we had 80 people who say they did one before and then there's another, you know, we've somehow attracted 50 new people? Or are we just limited to 120 people in town who do this kind of thing?
I like that. I like that.
And then I would give a link there at the end of question number one and say, if no,
Yeah.
you know, go take it.
Right.
And it's, it's right on the project website. The survey number one is still open, by the way.
Yeah.
If you just kind of came back to town next week and you hadn't taken it before, it's right there. These are the results. We have the 143 respondents up on the website now as well. So you can see what the results are and then it says on the website, if you haven't taken it, here you go. Go here.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so I like the idea, you know, the idea kind of just building and building and building.
And I don't know that I would do it at the beginning of the first question because I don't want to, I don't want to lose too many people who have short attention spans. But maybe at the bottom, say, you know, wanna see how the town voted? Here's the, you know, here's a link to the results of survey number one to, to, you know, keep that engagement going.
Excellent. Link, okay. Two very good suggestions. What do we think of question number one?
Show me all four and then we'll.
Okay. All right, we can do that. We can.
I need big picture.
So we can go forward.
Are we working on a theme as we do?
That was my question.
Yeah, yeah.
The first two are transportation, obviously, and the next two are gonna be recreation.
Oh, okay.
Those are the two themes for survey number two so far. But we can, you know, we'll do whatever you want. If you would rather work on a third theme, we can, we can work on that tonight, too. So here's number two is off-road pathways for bicycles and pedestrians. Last time this subject came up, I heard some concern that, you know, you don't want to get people worried that somebody's trying to build an off-road path across their property without their consent. But I like just keeping this thing ambiguous. It's like, you know, do you think it's a good idea to get from A to B and don't worry about the details? We'll figure that out later, you know?
Why, I guess I would wonder why, say, off-road pathways as opposed to improved access or improved pathways for bikes and pedestrians?
Right.
Because certainly like between here and Cape Porpoise, that improvement was huge for all of us here at Goose Rock in terms of safety and not thinking twice about getting on a bicycle. Whereas I would never get on a bicycle during the day and go to Cape Porpoise before. Early in the morning, fine, but not.
Tell me about that path, Paul.
Well, they just, when they improved the road. Well, they just, when they improved the road, um, and, you know, before repaving, they put a great deal of effort over two years into widening the road so there is a shoulder now, which there never was before. So you were taking your life in your hands, like, you know, elsewhere in town.
It's clearly marked that that's the shoulder too. So you have a line to follow.
So you guys feel pretty safe on that one, huh?
A lot safer. There's, it's still risk, but it's less risk.
Right.
Wilds District Road.
That's the difference between the on-road and off-road. The, the, it's less risk. Off-road is, it's hard for anything to go wrong.
And we really don't have, except for, um, uh, off-road bikes, we really don't have, you know, which is its own sport.
Right.
Which I would say is not enjoyed by the, by where our big population demographics are.
That's a good point. We should clarify the wording there. Um.
I mean, I think question one and two really go together if you're going to suggest, you know, are there locations that are hazardous? Or where would you like to see improved pathways for, for pedestrians and bicyclists? I mean, it, it takes off-road out of it. Are you looking to put off-road in there as off-road?
That was our intention. And then what, what, what we had in mind was something like a rail trail. You know, you don't need a railroad right away to do an off-road path. You have other opportunities. The, the, the advantage of being completely off the road is then if you're, if you're, your parents or young children, you can put them on the bikes and send one down the pathway. This is not like, it's not mountain or something out in a, in a, on a trail. This is a paved pathway. It's maybe eight to 10 feet wide.
Okay.
And, uh, in some parts.
Like the, like the, um, the trail, you know, that's.
The East Coast, yeah.
Yeah.
The Eastern Trail?
The Eastern Trail. I couldn't think of any. Thanks.
Right.
Only, uh, you know, the question is would, you know, is this something you'd like to see in Kinnibunkport? You don't have to go all the way out to, to Orunde or wherever that trail is.
I think everybody would say yes, it's a great idea, but the question is, do you put it in there? Um, not to limit our imaginations or do we realize the whole town is mountainous with ledge and rocks and narrow public ways? So it's probably not something that is going to happen in our lifetime.
It's like a question you could propose to the trust, you know? Was that something possible to do on one of the preserves? Where you could drive there and then ride?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, how would you do this going through folks' properties or, you know, the idea of just creating it out of the blue? Um, to me, it makes, uh, maybe better sense to provide, if possible, something like that in a property that's already there and that's, there's, where there's much more chance that it could happen.
Right, yeah. I, I guess number two is just testing the enthusiasm of.
Yeah. I would say, I would out there.
Hilton Head Island, uh, really has done a fantastic job with.
Yeah.
Paths everywhere. I mean, you could, you have 10, 12 miles of bike paths or pedestrian paths.
Yeah.
That are off-road. They just don't even come near the road.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, it's just really fabulous that, and some go through neighborhoods and some go, you know, through properties and things like that.
Right. And, and, you know, the, the, the rail trails are a pretty obvious example. And, and the advantage of the rail trail only has one owner you have to negotiate with to make it happen. But not everybody has a railroad track running through their town.
True.
You have an old one.
So what about the abandoned railroad that we have in our town?
Well, yeah, that's the sort of thing, you know, you could look into it. If it's going in a direction that people like, say, hey, I'd like to really go from here to there, um, would make sense. I know I had experience years ago, uh, when, when the Air Force left peace. Uh, as soon as they left, I jumped in there and got a grant and built an off-road bike trail, uh, through a portion of the Air Force base. But I was just an opportunist. I says, okay, the Air Force is out of here and nobody's doing anything, you know, and just. So opportunities open up and then that's, I always like to be, be prepared for, but, um.
And if there is, I, I'm not really familiar with the abandoned trail. Is that what went down to Cape Porpoise?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and I don't know, I mean, but the federal Rails to Trails program allows that if there is, um, an abandoned railroad, they have to go through a process to, I mean, Tom, I'm sure you understand it much better than I, but they have to go to, before they do anything else with it, there has to be an opportunity for a local group to take it over as a Rails to Trails. And then you get funding, you know, you apply for funding through the, you know, the appropriate sources. So if there is an abandoned trail, um, uh, that's still, you know, I don't, I don't know who owns it. If it's still legally there.
I don't know for certain. I, I heard there was a private owner that somehow got a hold of the, he did rights to that.
Yeah, that's interesting because the state usually gets first dibs. They, they, they don't want it, then the town would. It's interesting that a private owner would end up with it. Unless it's, unless it's the boss in Maine.
No, this ran from, uh, was part of the network that ran from the, the Cape Porpoise up to Sanford for the mills back in the day.
Wow. It sounds intriguing. I don't know what status of that one is, but.
Goes to my backyard.
Maybe, uh.
Does it go through your backyard?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and in terms of the, the issue was raised a few minutes ago about topography, um, the, uh, there's some off-road, um, pathways down, uh, in, uh, Truro and Cape Cod, the National Seashore that you can raise funds to ride your bikes on. They're anything but flat. They're just curving and going up and down all over the place. So that, that, you know, in fact, that the terrain is, is not flat, that makes it more attractive for, for some people.
And certainly the trust could do something like that. It's much more expensive to develop a, you know, a bike trail and a up and down, just cut the branches and, and make your path go where the deer have been running, um, or where you can get a foothold. You know, it's a whole different scale of development cost.
Yeah.
Then, you know, their mission has been to leave things in a natural state and to allow public access in an affordable way, I guess.
The other, the other thing to keep in mind is what's the purpose of the path? Is it just to go out there and get some fresh air and exercise? Or is it a, a transportation route to get somewhere where you need to go? And it could, could be both, but usually it's one or the other.
But, and I guess I'd want to, if, if we're talking about multi-use, is, is it possible like for any of these open areas, you know, again, for, I'm a hunter. So with private property always being restriction, you know, I'm always going to want to encourage o- opportunities for, for other people. Does the conservation trust, do they allow hunting? I, I've never asked that. Does anybody know that?
Uh, yes, they do.
Mm-hmm.
They do, okay.
Is this allowed?
I know this is specific to like bicycles and stuff, but I'd always want to encourage.
Multi-use.
A multi-use, you know, depending on what's being looked at.
Yes.
So. And my comment also goes back, I, I didn't, I, I didn't jump in about, do, do we, do our islands, the islands that we own, do we, do we advertise that as, as the ability to hunt on those? Like Vaughn Island, for example? Duck hunting as an example?
No idea.
Because I know, and the reason I bring this up and I'll, and, and I say it is because I think people are always going to assume, you know, that it's probably not allowed. And, and I would want to encourage, maybe not in this comprehensive plan, but, but in any kind of literature that, you know, if we're going to encourage hunting or at least allow it, that, you know, we, we make available the times of year that that would happen to at least, you know, walkers or bikers are aware of, you know, what time of year, you know, people may be hunting. So I just want to.
I think the trust materials do say that because I've asked them whether there are any, um, that their hunting is not allowed on because my wife is afraid of people like you, Jim. And, um, and, uh, Tom has said, uh, no, most are, you know, and, and their materials, then I went and looked at their materials more carefully. And they, you know, they do say, you know, please wear appropriate clothing in season, you know, during the hunting seasons, et cetera. So they are telling people.
Every, yeah, everybody, as a hunter, everybody always wants to have a positive outcome and everybody wants to get along. So it's always a good idea to, you know, uh, nobody wants to, I, I, I definitely don't want people to have a negative experience when it comes to somebody hunting or, or what they assume is okay, you know, you know? So I'll make her a steak dinner if, if that, if that, uh, changes her mind.
Madison?
Yes.
She's pretty much vegetarian.
She likes duck.
And you know what? It's just, uh, it's a noise thing too. When you go into the woods, you want to hear birds chirping, not guns. At least some people like that, me included. I'm not, you know, when I'm walking through the woods and I hear guns blaring, I, I kind of feel like, ugh, I'm going someplace else.
Yeah, because you know it's hunting season. So, and it's, and it's, and it's a certain time of year, so.
Yeah.
So. It's, uh, I don't want to discourage people from, you know, realizing that, you know, that people do put that food on their table. So it's not just a sport.
So maybe on this question, back to this, maybe we can ask it both ways. Would you like to have more on-road or, and off-road pathways for bicyclists and pedestrians? To, because for example, this has generated a little bit of a conversation and maybe there is an abandoned rail line that we would have, you know, that we could develop into a Rails to Trails. And it's just never been done because, because of whatever reason, you know, maybe it isn't the trust, maybe it's somebody else who does it.
Yeah, you know, the other thing you could have is you, you could have some, um, an owner of a very large property in town. It suddenly decides, you know, he's a big fan of, uh, this sort of use and he just, you know, volunteered to donate it to the town for this purpose, you know?
Or just allow, allow path over.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. And that was, for example, that with the town village parcel, that was, you know, discussed. Well, there's, there's, you know, you know, if you could connect this land to adjacent lands and get permission to have, um, you know, a bicycle path, for example, then, you could get from way over here in town to way over here on town, kids could ride their bikes to school again, you know?
Right.
And then if the town owns the land, that, that makes it pretty easy. All right, we, we're gonna, what I'm hearing is we're gonna have to, um, go back and reword number one and two. Um, this is, this is useful information. Um, you know, when I s- see some of these words, a certain thing comes to mind, but what is valuable feedback because obviously there are people out there, other people read things, read it differently, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I, we need to go back and, uh, spend a little time making this clearer than it is. Are you ready for number three and four?
Sure.
Ta-da. Yep.
Hey, here we go into the recreation theme. Your, your, your favorite is the first one, boat launches. And number two.
They're pretty direct. I mean, I think they'll generate responses. Not to, um, we're looking for information from, you know, residents and this, this will do it.
And then the last one will be, you know, listening to the birds in the woods.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, um, so if we get responses back, like I would expect docs and boat launches to be, if you're like a rating of zero to 10, they're all going to be one, one or two. Place to launch smaller auto craft such as kayaks, maybe it's a two. Beach access, maybe it's a little higher. And then place to see, sightseeing might be, be the highest, but what do we do with that? Because we know, kind of know that already, right?
Well, you know, the only, the only people who really want to do, to launch boats are probably going to have a response. You know, some people will probably be a little indifferent because they don't, they don't boat, you know, they don't paddle.
The other thing too to keep in mind, remember the state's agenda is to, to give everybody in Maine access to your waterfront.
Yeah.
This question is only going to Kinnibunkport residents. So you're going to have a different score here when you ask, well, you know, some places you could launch your kayak. And, you know, half the town's going to say, yeah, I know where I could launch one, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Well, certainly. The kayakers will know.
Yeah.
They will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking and seeing what the perception is from residents.
I agree.
Okay. So this, this one's in better shape than one and two. Want to see number four? You ready for four?
Sure. That's good.
Right.
Recreational or cultural?
Yeah, that's good. Cultural. Add cultural in there.
Number four.
Want to add cultural since the chapter.
Yeah.
Covers both.
Yeah.
Or you could have it a separate question. You want to join them together or have them separate?
Well, were you going to do yes, no, explain or comments? Because if you do yes, no, explain, then people will say, we really need a concert venue. An outdoor concert venue or something like that.
Yeah, we could have some suggestions, I think.
No, I'm, I'm just, I mean, if it was open-ended and let them, if you're just, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you were going to put for responses. Just open-ended?
Yeah, our intent was open-ended. Is that, do you prefer open-ended?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, open-ended. And it's asking what types.
Open-ended is fine. And then you can add cultural because they'll just, then we can separate them. I don't think any other question. And shorter is better than longer.
Okay.
I, I agree with Paul.
My next question, Paul, is, are you guys good with four questions or do you want to have more?
Can you make recreational slash cultural into one question?
Yeah, I was just saying recreational or cultural.
Oh, I, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't get that. I should have listened. Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think four questions is, is adequate for a mini survey. Um, that's my thinking. What do you guys think?
Yeah, it's great fun.
So what, what we'll do, Liz and I are going to work on number one and two based on the feedback we got tonight. Three and four seem to be in good shape. And when we see you again in two weeks, we'll, um, we'll, we'll finalize one and two.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Did we, um, distribute this through like, uh, Kinnibunkport Resin Association last time? I forget how we.
Yes, that was definitely, that's how I did it. I received it from Dave James.
Yeah, I was, if Werner was with us tonight, I'd ask him exactly how it went out because I know Liz and I didn't participate in that part of the process.
I think we had agreed, among other things, it was going to go out, you know, from the town to all, to all people. Not, not the growth planning lists or, and they sent us.
I thought it was all, I thought it was all lists. It was sort of a combined master list of all the.
Now, does town maintain a combined master list? How did that happen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll check in with Werner again to clarify that and make sure, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good. So any other discussion on that at this point?
I'm good.
Good. All right. So next up is our, uh, so thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom.
If you give us a minute, then we could just go over our next steps as well.
I did, I did have one more item. It'll take you one minute. You ready for my last?
Okay, yeah, shoot. Go for it.
Is it a joke?
Huh?
Is it a joke?
Is it a joke?
We could use a joke.
It's not a joke.
Yeah, okay.
Janet sent me an email, uh, we could go, I thought it was a couple excellent suggestions. And I agree with everything she said, but I didn't want to put it in the cop plan without, you know, bussing across you guys in a public forum. without, you know, bussing across you guys in a public forum here. So this is one of her two suggestions about the last chapter. Remember the last chapter, Public Facilities and Services? So Janet, you can speak to this if you want or, or I can. I, I, I think it's, it's a good addition.
You can, you can say it. It's okay. You can read it.
Yeah, well, you guys can read it. It's, it's, it just adds a little more depth to our discussion in the entry committee. Remember that part of the chapter?
Right.
And then it was the, about the Graves Library. And it gives you a little more background on Graves. I had almost written something like this, but I was like so kind of hypnotized with that beautiful picture of the meeting room, the mother's wing, that I, I, I gave more space to the picture than the text, but we can, we can fix that.
One quick question for you, Tom. Did you say that you were not certain of the numbers of, it's 100, 100 people seated and 140 standing room?
Oh, I didn't know that. The website just says capacity 140. What did you mean?
Yeah, 140 standing, but 100 seated.
All right, well, we'll go back and fix that too.
I just felt this was kind of an important fact that it was really a bank for a very short time. It was served as the custom house for the longest length of time until it became a library, so.
Wow.
Yeah, I never knew the history, thanks.
And Abbott Gray has owned about 20 different houses in town. He was like a real estate junkie. He really was. But he was also a fine painter and, you know, the idea of the murals has been in my mind lately because I don't know if any of you saw, I probably should have sent it out. The Times, there was a beautiful story written this, that was printed last week in The Times. A young couple who live in New Jersey bought their vacation home. They bought the, the now, the yellow house across from the library, which is the now Luke's House. Had one point been a tavern and had, you know, done, had served many different purposes over its, over its life. But Louis Norton did paint in the dining room four walls of exquisite murals. One of them is the, the Battle of Cape Porpoise. But the woman herself wrote the article and it was in the New York Times this past week. So I'll send the link.
Saw that picture.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody's good with these additions to the last chapter then, huh?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Well, so we could start our next steps then, we'll skip four, is a review of chapter 15, Regional Coordination?
Yep, that's up next.
Okay, good. All right. So review of the minutes from February 2nd. I have just a couple minor changes. So in the first one under the fire department?
Yes.
Very last sentence. That's specific to the Kittredge Trust, those values.
Yes, in other words, don't put it, don't mix it with the CB fund.
Yeah, CB funds is totally different.
I can fix that.
Yeah. And I believe that that's actually, that's the interest that's owned by the four companies. There's actually another pot of money somewhere that the town has.
Yeah, the endowment interest is shared.
The endowment itself, that's just the interest piece.
Right.
So, and it's.
I talked to Jenny James and she said, the frustrating thing about that fund is it only allows you to purchase a fully, a truck fully equipped.
Yeah, except for, except for hoses.
Okay.
Except for hoses, but everything else has got to be on the truck.
You got to pay for the hoses yourself?
Yeah, they, they don't have, they don't have to include hoses, but it has to be fully equipped. And also actually technically it's not equally divided.
Oh, it isn't?
No, it's divided though, so just take out equally.
So I should just take out the word equal?
What's that?
You, you were talking fast and I was able to find the minutes here.
So the very last sentence of the first section on the fire department?
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, the trust balance, that's, that's specific to the Kittredge family trust. The CB money's different, okay, for the total, for that balance.
So how, how do you want to read it? Just, you want to specify Kittredge, huh?
Yeah, just the Kittredge Family Fire Equipment Fund, yeah. And then it's the, the interest that comes out of that fund is, is divided amongst the four companies, but it's not equal.
All right, I'll go back in the.
And that's per the, the trust's requirements.
Or not.
Yeah. In section four, it's just a table, it's, it's actually figures, 13, four and 13, six. Not tables.
Okay, they're figures.
The tables were, I think were in the Emergency Medical Service. It's a figures. And then the C wall was 20, 26, the last.
Okay, well, at least I know you're reading.
Not 2006?
Yeah, not 2006, yeah. That's what I, that's what I saw. Thank you very much, very detailed.
Yeah.
She did that on purpose so you'd pick up on it. She's making sure somebody's reading.
This is a quiz to make sure you're reading it, so it's a nice task.
Okay, so I'll take a motion. I think a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Has amended there?
Second.
Has amended. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Raise a hand. Aye, aye, very good. Thank you very much, Janet.
Okay.
Okay, and then what wasn't on this agenda, and we'll have to move it into March, is we will have to have a discussion. I guess what I'll do is I'll send an email, because we're supposed to do it by February. I'll send an email to Werner, just asking him to get us that information we need to review the growth area maps and permits and do that analysis either in March or April. And they, they send off a letter to the town, to the water company, and also to the head of the Public Works for their information on sewer and water. Okay, and I'll copy all on that. I would have told Werner directly, but he's not with us this evening, so.
I, I got one more question for you.
Sure.
I'm sure you're familiar with the, the work the Regional Planning Commission's doing on climate change and resiliency. They have two staff that are dedicated to that mission. And one of them's being funded by, you know, the six towns along the coast. We were thinking of inviting them to a meeting of the Growth Planning Committee just so you guys can be introduced and hear what they're doing. The, I haven't invited them, we hadn't posed you an invitation. I wanted to run it by you guys first, but the, the next meeting will be about regional coordination. That would be, that would probably be an appropriate time to talk about coordinating regionally, you know?
Hmm. Sounds good to me.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, I'll be, I'll be talking to these two tomorrow and I'll, I'll extend an invitation, see if they're available.
Okay.
When is that, March?
The first Tuesday, right?
Yeah, March 2nd.
March 2nd.
All right, works for me. Okay. Any other business?
None.
Hearing no other business.
There you go, Jim.
Hearing no other business, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Good one.
Seattle is worse.
Yeah, I will.